Yes, good evening. Before you today, you may recall earlier this month, we came forward with the latest update of the Renaissance Zone Plan. This would be the first project approved under that plan, should you choose to go forward with it. This would be in the newly added Gateway District. It's a project located at the now former El Rocco Lounge and Bottle Shop site. The project as proposed would be a renovation or remodel of the lounge portion of the project. The bottle shop will continue to operate, the project being a refinishing of the interior of that portion of the building, as well as re-facing the exterior, so it'll gain Gateway Avenue frontage as well, or Gateway Drive frontage as well. So, the project as proposed is compliant with the newly approved plan update, and complies with all state Renaissance Zone guidelines as well. So, staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions?
I'll move approval.
Mr. Weber has no questions, but moves approval. Mr. Cavani seconds.
Mr. Conlon, I have a question.
Sure.
When talking with a prospective Renaissance Zone project applicant, do you explain to them that they get one bite at the Renaissance Zone apple?
Yes, well, yeah, it's part of the many things we sort of cover with them, is that, you know, we, part of our due diligence, I guess, is to check to make sure the project hasn't received it before, and as part of that conversation, we discuss with them that you do get just the one chance with it, so.
Great, perfect. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Weber, did you ever signify by saying aye? I'm sorry, Mr. Weber, did you have a?
It's good to remind them of that, but it's hard to remember it 15 years later sometimes.
Yes, correct, exactly. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Conlon. Item 2.2, application for Class III on and off sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage license from Valley Liquors, Inc., DBA Hugo's Wine and Brew, located at 500 De Mars Avenue, Suite A-1. Ms. Lamarc.
President Sandy, members of City Council, Finance Department has received an application for a Class III on and off sale beer and wine license from Valley Liquors, Inc., who will do business as Hugo's Wine and Brew. This will be located in the new store down here on the downtown as part of pure development on Fifth and De Mars, and they are looking for approval tonight of that application. There were floor plans included in your information with the staff report, and representatives of Hugo's are here if you have any questions regarding their project.
Great, any comments or questions related to the application?
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber?
I have a comment and then a quick question for Mr. Gaussdott, actually. First of all, comment, this is an incredibly exciting project. We're so fortunate to have Hugo's in our community and to have them developing a store downtown. It's a real game changer for the city, for the downtown area, and for the whole city, and we're really lucky to have them. A lot of cities wish that they could have something like this. As far as the design, and I'm not calling into question that we shouldn't move forward with this, but I'm curious, from an ordinance standpoint, for Mr. Gaussdott, I'm noticing in the blueprints that the two parts of the license end up in two different parts of the store. What does our current ordinance, if anything, say about that sort of division?
We, at the direction, or Sherry, Councilman Weber, Sherry did make some inquiries about the schematics and walls and things like that, and there really isn't anything precise in the ordinance regarding those matters, except that the council can impose reasonable restrictions or regulations as they see fit. So, it's not, it's a little squishy, so to speak, but it gives the council some authority to make some discretionary decisions on the layout of the premises.
Thank you, sir. I have no interest in doing that with the matter that's being brought forward to us tonight. However, Mr. Gaussdott, our new city attorney, I guess you're not new anymore, but we have kind of every four or five years, it seems, done a review of our liquor license ordinances, and with COVID and this emerging post-COVID economy, I wonder if it might not be time to do that again, both in relation to this matter, you know, issues that might come up with this matter, or other issues that we're going to discuss tonight. But, not intending any of that to impact this specific matter, I vote full approval of this proposal.
Is that a motion, Mr. Weber?
I'd like to move full approval. Yes, please, thank you.
Second by Weigl. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.3, amend Grand Forks City Code to allow gaming within designated areas of Class IV alcoholic beverage establishments.
President Sandy, members of council, Finance Department has received over the years, especially within the last year and a half, two years, numerous requests from people and questions regarding gaming, both from agencies, organizations, looking for sites to have gaming at, as we have lost some. Especially in the last year, we've had three that have either changed their class or closed, and that is making it harder for them to find sites to locate at, which impacts their fundraising abilities. We have also had questions from license holders wondering about the ability to add gaming as another amenity and a draw for their customers. So, we do have a firm proposal, and there are some stakeholders in the audience here that are willing to provide their information for council as to their request. The request before you tonight is specific to Class IV. They are spelled out in Grand Forks City Code as not ever being able to have gaming on their premise. They are the only license that says that. With the turning economy, changing economy, and actually the changing of business operations, some people would say there's kind of a gray line now between who's a, the operations of a Class IV versus a Class I. I did provide for you some information in the staff report, kind of comparing some of the major differences between the, those two classes of license, and also the list of license holders of both of those classes of license. The intent is not to have gaming throughout the whole Class IV establishment, but just in the specially designated square foot area that's listed as a lounge area in which minors are not prohibited, or are prohibited from being in. So, up for your consideration and discussion, and again, those stakeholders are here to provide some input as backing for their request.
Mr. Weigl?
I'll just be brief, but I think this is a great idea. I think our restaurants have been through a tremendous amount of stress dealing with COVID. They've partnered with the city and public health, and they've done everything we've asked, and I almost see this as an opportunity for them to assist them in rebounding, as well as an opportunity for a lot of nonprofits that could benefit, especially children, whether it be youth hockey or something along those lines, to also benefit from this. So, I've always said I'm a big fan of looking at our policies and our ordinances that we have, and if it's reasonable to make a change to them, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Ms. Mark?
I think you said that the Class IV was the only one that explicitly said that you couldn't have this type of gaming. Do you know why that was, or why that was included when it was written?
My understanding is, I was not here when this code was written, but my understanding was that at one time, when it was originally put in place, the Class IV establishment was more of your traditional supper club, like a country club, your elk club, your eagles club, barns boot. It was a more steak and seafood type of establishment. I think the people holding that Class IV license and in general dining has changed since this code was implemented, but it was something to try and differentiate a place that is a restaurant that has alcohol versus a bar and entertainment industry. Those lines, again, I think have kind of changed over the years, just in people's, so we felt when the request came in, this was something that should be brought forward for you to consider and decide if you'd like to keep things the same way, or if times have changed and we need to look at an update in the code.
Mr. Cavani?
I think in an effort for Grand Forks to continue to be the most business-friendly city and to offer another tool for our restaurants, and then also to support nonprofits locally, this just makes a great, it's a great decision, in my opinion, so I appreciate this being brought forward and being considered.
I think, from my perspective, the concept is to keep young people separated from gaming in general. I think that was probably why it was created in the first place, because gaming is meant for adults, not for young people. I think my, I wouldn't call it a concern, my question is, how do we designate separate areas, whether it's 800 feet, or 50 feet, or 5,000 feet? How do you designate the separation between the two? Mr. Weigl, you probably know.
Well, I think it's already designated, the separation is, if you go to Buffalo Wild Wings, that bar area is only for 21 and above. Nobody's allowed in there, so I'm assuming that would be your designated gaming area. So, I think you already have that built-in separation.
I think you're right. I'm talking about how do you physically, I mean, I understand that you can say that this area is, do we have any specific requirements for what make up the separation between the spaces? I know even at, when Northern Air was looking for their liquor license, we said, well, okay, you have to put in a half wall to make sure that we can show how the spaces, I don't know if that was right then, and, or not. I'm just trying, speaking out loud, if Ground Round comes in and says, we want to put in gaming, how do we, as a group, know that they're separating it the way we want it separated?
President Sandy, Ground Round's a good example. They actually do have a designated bar area. It's the area, they have a wall that has kind of some arches that separates the seating that's right adjacent to the bar from the rest of the bar side of the Ground Round, so their designated area right now would be just that area that's encased right along the bar.
Right, and that kind of goes to my point, though. If you're standing here, that doesn't look any different than right here, right? There is no visual separation between those spaces, other than a few little arches, right? So, I'm not saying that we shouldn't support this, I just wonder if we've given it any thought to what sort of separation, how do we define that there's 800 square feet, so that the original intent, whether, if we want to keep the original intent, which is to keep young people away from gambling, how do we show that we're actually keeping young people away from the gambling?
President Sandy?
Yeah.
Perhaps this could be part of the review of our liquor license ordinances that I alluded to with the last item.
Perhaps. I don't want to slow this down and not make a decision tonight on this.
Me neither.
I think it's important, but I also think it's important that we put some thought into how we should make sure we're doing what we want to do. Yes, Mr. Gaussdott?
Yeah, thank you, and Councilmember Weber and President Sandy, I think that, in that context, we could think through if we need to make a change to this particular ordinance for it to move forward with, if you, to have some discussion about how you designate that 800-foot area. Is it a half wall, is it a full wall, what is, what is being proposed? I think that could be incorporated within the first reading of the ordinance for next week at City Council. It'd be probably the first task of the review of the entirety of the alcohol ordinances within the city, but to keep this moving forward, if that's the wish of the council, I'd be more than happy to take a look at that, talk to Sherry and others, to see if there's a mechanism that could be utilized, a reasonable mechanism that could be utilized to designate that 800-foot square area.
I'll move approval with the inclusion of the recommendation from Mr. Gaussdott.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Is there a second? Second. Second by Weigl, is there more comment? Mr. Veen?
Just wondering, what's the difference in price between a Class I and Class IV? Two questions. Do you have any?
What's the difference in price between Class I and Class IV?
President Sandy, members of council, for a Class IV establishment that has 100 seats or more, the fees are exactly the same as with a Class I establishment. The issuance fee is $69,160, and the annual fee they pay is $3,0895. If you have a smaller 100-seat or less Class IV license, then the issuance fee is just over $31,000, and they pay a lesser annual fee. So, there's a little bit of a difference there, but.
And, yeah, people are welcome to speak if there's someone interested to address the topic.
My name is Brad Vekki, I am, I'm actually with Grand Forks Youth Hockey Association, 1715 North Third Street here in Grand Forks, and we were brought into this, I think, trying to explore different ways of fundraising for our program, trying to keep our costs down and not increase them as we move forward, while still providing services and programming that hopefully gets better every year. So, looking at comparable organizations across the state, looking at relationships they have with businesses, charitable gaming was a common denominator for most of them, so we started looking into how we could get involved. What we found is that within Grand Forks, there's not a lot of, or any availability right now. I think that was a few years ago, there were some issues addressed with gaming, but right now it's extremely tight. So, looking at the relationships the other organizations had, we found that a lot of them had gaming within establishments that are similar to what we classify as a Class IV here in Grand Forks. We are, I guess, just here in support of the idea that offering more opportunities for nonprofits and fundraising to help support us.
Thank you. If anyone cares about my opinion, I have no problem with this, I agree, it's nice to give nonprofits the opportunity to do some fundraising, and I think it might help the establishments draw people in. I do, however, have a concern about the separation of minors, because that is the intention, I believe, of why it was excluded from Class IV. I think if we can come up with an eloquent solution for a definition of what the separation would include that we can all agree on, I have no problem with it going through, so. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Mark, certainly.
So, Mr. Gaussdott, the way it's written right now, the gaming devices would be located in a designated area, would that be essentially the bar area, unless you come up with some other alternatives where you could include like a half wall or something that designates that space for the gaming? Is that your thought?
Yeah, Councilmember Mark, the, that's why I use the term Class IV designated lounge area to define it, and that's only where the gaming could occur. You can't take, you know, the paper pull tabs or anything, you can't take it out, it has to be conducted within that particular location, so that's, my thought is, if we're going to do something with respect to the designation, that subpart D where we define the Class IV designated lounge area would be the perfect spot to put in those parameters as to what it means to be a designated lounge area.
And then, would they file that with their liquor license where that is?
I would think that that would be part of the process for the application.
President Sandy, members of City Council, City Attorney Gaussdott, when a gaming agency is going to come in and provide gaming at an establishment, they do need to provide a floor plan as part of their site authorization and list where they're going to locate within that establishment, and then also what types of gaming they're going to have. So, we would get that annually from the gaming agency when they come in.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, there's a motion and second to approve on the floor with additional instructions for the city attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.4, amend Grand Forks City Code Section 22-02281B, definition of a restaurant. Ms. Lamarc.
President Sandy, members of City Council, we, back in November 18th of 2019, you granted a Class III liquor license, beer and wine, to Northern Air. At that time, their plan was to install a full kitchen, as that is having food and meals prepared and served on-site as part of a requirement for having alcohol with a Class III license when minors are present. Shortly after that, we know that COVID hit, and until the kitchen is installed, Mr. Lee has been allowed to have alcohol service in the upper level bar area only, and only with no minors present, unless he closes that area for a private party, and then that, he has to file a special $55 Class 11 permit every time a private party wants to come in and throw axes with a minor present. With the impacts of COVID, it has been difficult for Mr. Lee to get that kitchen up and running, and also, I think with our current industry of traffic, there are some challenges with overall public being able to come out and utilize those entertainment venues. So, with that, Mr. Lee contacted us and asked for us to bring this back to you, to see whether or not there are some opportunities that could allow him to continue improving in offering services and amenities within the community. One option that was proposed after some research on behalf of the city attorney and staff and working with Mr. Lee, was to take a look at the definition of a restaurant that's listed in regards to a Class III license, and see, have your consideration to amend that definition to include a Class III, getting a contractual relationship with one or more restaurants who would provide and leave their menus on-site, rather than Mr. Lee preparing the food. When someone placed the order, Mr. Lee would contact that establishment, they would bring the food in for the customers to have. He is already doing this to a certain extent, and just want to see whether this would be something that would, you would consider. And Mr. Lee is here, so he can provide you some more information as far as this request goes, and then just up for your discussion.
So, just confirm, he's already contracting out and having other restaurants supply food?
I know we talked about Pizza Ranch in the past, but I'll let you update them on your current.
Sounds good, thank you. City Council, I appreciate you guys hearing this again. So, in our birthday party areas, we do have a contract with Pizza Ranch right now, so if they want food then at their birthday parties, then they go through us, we arrange it with Pizza Ranch, and then Pizza Ranch brings it over, and then that's the only food that's allowed in for our birthday parties. So, what, one of the ideas that we were proposing was, if we did that up in the act showing area, where we could have maybe four or five different businesses, where it would give them the option of what they wanted to have, we could then help out the other local restaurants, and maybe as a possibility, then have us allowed to have minors. Let me back up just a little bit. COVID has been especially hard on the hospitality arena. We have been no different. We got the act showing area open March 9th, March 13th, of course, everything was shut down. We were closed for four months. During that time, for us to stay viable, we had to double our debt. So, around the middle of July, then, we opened back up. As of last year, our revenues were down 40%. Matter of fact, there's one area of our attractions that probably is not going to open ever back up again. When we were looking at the act showing, we were looking at a way to diversify so that we could have something to offer for more demographics than what we were currently doing. That actually turned out to be prophetic, actually, because had we not had the act showing area, along with the alcohol sales, Northern Air would probably not be open today. It has been that, we have taken that big of a hit. So, for us to borrow the extra money to put the restaurant in right now, given the amount of debt of debt that we already have, probably it does not make the most business sense. So what we were looking at doing was trying to find other options. Like Sherri was saying, we've purchased several of those Class 11 permits. Matter of fact, one about a month ago was a Bantam hockey team that was here from Minneapolis. We closed up the whole place for two hours, okay, and 20, 13, and 14-year-olds threw axes along with their parents. Absolutely nothing went wrong. They had a blast, they appreciated that we were able to do it. Matter of fact, they were kind of shocked, actually, when I told them that I would have to buy a special permit because there's several of those locations in Minneapolis that you can just go to as minors with alcohol present. Now that's not saying anything about our codes, that's just reality. So we were kind of looking for some other options that maybe we could relook at this and see if there isn't some possibilities for us to get minors in. We end up turning away two or three families every weekend just because they buy tickets online. We have it stated right on our website that you have to be 21 and older. They get to the door, we check IDs, and they go, "Sorry, you know, we can't let you in at this point." That's...
Thank you, Mr. V.
I appreciate your looking into this.
Thank you. Council, any thoughts? Mr. Weigl?
Is it your intent that at one, at some point, you'd like to add that kitchen still?
Oh, absolutely.
So my question would be, and maybe this is for Mr. Gostad or whoever it might be, but is there an opportunity for, besides obviously not amending our current city code, if we're going to look at all these things more, but is there a one-year exemption that we could offer or something along those lines that we could provide for this business?
I think you'd have to do it, excuse me, under the, kind of, the emergency powers that would exist, but those are limited as far as the length, period of time that at least the mayor's emergency orders could be issued. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yep.
Any, anyone else have any thoughts? Mr. Fodder, good evening. Thoughts there?
President Sandy, members of the committee, Javin Bedai with Grand Forks Public Health. The plight is difficult for the restaurants, and my comments are in no way intended towards this particular one, but as we inspect restaurants, we have an interest in how we define restaurants, and I just want to caution against any unintended consequences if we are to look at redefining restaurant. I don't want to have to go and inspect every catered location in town as that, if the term "restaurant" has changed. I don't think that's the intent here at all. But the term "restaurant," through code, we've tried to keep it congruent as it's used in the state laws as well as the FDA food code that we've adopted. So there, I believe there is another option under the liquor licensing to do a different type of liquor license option. Maybe Mr. Gostad can speak more to that, but my concern is just how we define restaurants and then generally alcohol and just how you want your policies for the city as it relates to alcohol and minors, trying to not normalize alcohol use with minors as well as reinforce the thought that alcohol is necessary for having fun is kind of in public health interest. So with that, I'll stand down. You will take questions.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Cavani.
So just a question as we define restaurants. I think somewhere we saw forced, or made from scratch. Is that a term that is in code or is that a term that's just, was in our documentation?
Made from scratch.
So maybe, yeah, I'll go a step further. So let's say that they have a proofing oven and a pizza's delivered, cooked, but then goes into the proofing oven until it's ordered. Is that defined as a restaurant or how is that, how would you define that? Just curious, yeah?
Restaurant is defined in several different code sections and areas. It's, as it relates to this, it's what do you guys intend? Is the intent where meals are served and that is what draws the folks in with the minors? Or in this case, do you want to allow catering service to be considered a restaurant? As far as restaurant goes in other places, it's where meals are served, you know, whether that's a frozen pizza that's cooked and served as a meal or otherwise. We also have restaurants, you know, food establishment license would include, you know, your froyo yogurt. It's not necessarily a meal service, but a treat rather, a novelty. So food establishment is very broad, any food or drink, including alcohol or chewing gum.
So I'm...
But as to what we license, it's what requires, you know, sanitary measures and cold holding measures to protect it from becoming...
So, Mr. Lee, is the goal to sell alcohol or is the goal to be able to have people, young children, under 21 there while alcohol is being served?
Well, quite honestly...
Because, for example, if you contract with Rambas guys, they can deliver a beer. And so they can, you want to order pizza, order beer, have them bring it in.
I already sell their beer, though, so that...
I understand that.
Okay.
But you're saying that you can't tell minors, is the goal to have minors in? You're contracting for food, you can contract for the booze, too.
Okay, I think I understand your question. What I would like to do is try to figure out a way where I can operate normally under the same limitations as what the Class 11 allows me to do. Because it seems like if I pay $55, then some reason then I can have minors in there. That doesn't change the fact that I can't sell alcohol to minors. It just means that they're allowed in there to do the activity, and I still have to follow all the rules of serving and all the rules of, that I've already signed up for, along with following all of my insurance regulations and all that kind of stuff. So I guess my answer to that is, is that I, I'm struggling to see the difference between if I buy a permit for $55 that allows me to have minors in there.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not the question that I asked. Mr. Gostad, legally, can he have minors in his establishment and have, without getting a special permit, just not close during the day? He has a family that comes in, he's not selling his alcohol, they place an order for pizza and beer to be delivered, and they get it delivered. Can a family do that? Can he legally do that?
President Sandy and council, the, no. And here's why. Here's why, is that for purposes of the section that's being discussed, it defines a restaurant for various classes to mean a place where food and meals are prepared. That's the stumbling block because it's not being prepared on-site. And that's a stumbling block that they, that exists for the type of license that Mr. Lee has, is there is no meals being prepared on-site. And so one of the options that my office thought might work if the council was inclined was to allow for meals to be prepared for off-site through this contract. That was something that was a proposal. Another proposal would be to recreate another license. There may be other things that I may not have thought about, but that's the stumbling block is there aren't any meals being prepared on-site. If he gets the restaurant, then, or gets the food equipment in, then that issue resolves itself through that, that process.
Right. I don't know, I ask Ms. Mayor one last thought. I don't know your business model, and I don't know what kind of money you're making on alcohol versus not being able to have children there. My implication was you stop selling alcohol, you open it up to have any age there, but then offer that if somebody wants to call one of the local pizza places and have them bring pizza and beer, they can't. I don't know, that's the question that I'm asking, but I'm guessing Mr. Lee will say, "Eh, we make 80% of our money on alcohol, so that doesn't make any sense for us." You don't have to answer that, I'm just gathering that. Mr. Mayor, you have a thought?
Yeah, President Sandy, I think probably one important thing to note is if he did have that food preparation equipment, then minors would be allowed in there as long as it was provided there. Maybe there's a possibility, you know, with where COVID's gone and just the new economy and the way we're doing food now, we're not going to restaurants quite as often. Maybe, you know, as he plans to within a year, maybe this is a temporary ordinance change with a sunset clause, so after a year, it reverts back, so Javin doesn't have to worry about this long-term and maybe has to deal with it for a little while, but how many, you know, inspections are you really going to do in the next year? So that, I guess that would be, you know, a possible option, maybe to make everybody happy, but something to consider.
Council President Sandy, if I could, on the delivery, because I think it's going to lead to further requests, we have Rambas here tonight, too, is that we're doing all that alcohol, and we've done it since probably April due to the emergency orders, and we always knew that coming out of this pandemic, some of these new business models, maybe some should continue on, and I know not, some people are horrified for me to say this, but maybe some of these things are, we should allow because, let's be frank, people were concerned and they were here, Mr. Council President Sandy, remember, we're delivering food and we can deliver alcohol right now, and some people, and I think it's proven out people are responsible, and it's gone really well. And so I think that might be one additional thing, we haven't brought that to you, but if we, if we end the emergency declaration, that all goes away, too. And so I think in advance that, I can see that as a next discussion point of should we allow that to continue on for businesses that have created a niche and consumers probably like it at this point, and it's been done really responsibly, too.
I disagree with that, but okay. Ms. Mock?
I guess I don't actually love the idea of changing that definition of restaurant. I'm wondering if there's not, you know, like Mr. Weigl suggested, some sort of middle ground or some sort of workaround that we could do. You know, I don't know, Mr. Lee, if you've thought, could you possibly have, can we have hours where you don't sell alcohol so that you could have minors present to participate in the, that axe-throwing? You know, if it were, there's no alcohol served from a certain time to a certain time, so you can have those leagues, and then after that, it goes back to the alcohol sales so that you can kind of do both? Or I don't know if with the Class 11 license, if we could offer a modification where you could apply for a longer-term coverage under that if there would be any potential, so it's not just a one-time fee, but maybe a longer term?
Council President Sandy, Councilmember Mock, the Class 11 is regulated under state code. Any of those special off-premise licenses are only, they're kind of a one-time special event item. They can never go longer than 14 days, and they are, so they're supposed to be for one continuous event. So if Mr. Lee had my family on Monday and your family on Tuesday, those would be considered two separate events, which would be two separate permits. And that's where it gets to be a little costly doing the Class 11 every time you have someone who wants to come in, so...
Mr. Weigl?
I think Mr. Bean has some...
Oh, Mr. Bean? I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
If you mind, I'd like to speak.
Of course. Okay. Well, I was, I was kind of concurring with what the mayor said, Mr. Weigl said. I think we're in extraordinary times, and we need to give ourselves some time for businesses to recover, that we could put something in that maybe sunset, I think, as was established, that would allow us to continue something for now and then revisit that at a later time to see if it could even remain or if we need to come back to what's current. But it seems to me like we should be able to figure out something to help out in the meantime in an ordinance, and I guess, and for Mr. Gostad, if you can put a sunset time or you just come back and reconsider at a time to be determined, would be the question I'd have.
That would be a policy decision by council, Councilmember Bean, and I'd be more than happy, either way would work. If you wanted to put in a date certain, it may give some guidance to business owners as to when they would have to get that restaurant equipment up and running. There'd be some deadline, and I don't know if you're going to do that, if it's one year or two years out, you know, or you just put in some, it could be amended, but again, any ordinance can be amended at the discretion of the council.
Mr. Weigl?
Just briefly, Mayor, would you be willing to, under your emergency powers, to allow this to happen? I think, because if we amended ordinance or created ordinance, we're what, two, three weeks out in order for this to take effect? That be correct, Mr. Gostad?
Correct. If you, assuming you had the first reading next week, then you'd, there'd be two weeks after that for the second reading.
So if the mayor uses executive authority and then what we do is, because we're in government, we have committees for everything, so we can create another subcommittee to this committee and actually just take a look at all these different liquor license ordinances that we have and let whoever's on that come up with recommendations, do different things, then report that back. I don't see the executive or the emergency powers by the mayor ending anytime soon as long as there's money still available out there. I think we do that for now, allow Mr. Lee's business to continue on and hopefully recover a little bit more, and then we can have a broader discussion about what some of those liquor license ordinance should be because seven of us up here, it isn't going to be solved in an hour, it's not going to be solved in three hours, it's going to take significant time, and I think to help business in this time would be important.
Mr. Gostad?
Yeah, just for the council's edification, the emergency order, you can temporarily suspend an ordinance, which would be the case of 60 days. The council could extend that period of time, but again, with the emergency order, you know, the emergency status of the city, those go away. I want to see emergency status, so you don't want to run into a situation where you kind of stub your toe and you forget about, you know, you let the emergency status lapse, and there are some other things that occur, but just so you're aware, it's a 60-day period, subject to extension by the council.
I think 60 days would give us an opportunity to have some of those discussions and extend if we need to.
I think... Mr. Cavani?
I'm just curious if one year is viable. I mean, one year's quick, so if that's something that this committee considers, is one year a reasonable amount of time?
So my business, a lot, along with a lot of other hospitality ones are, you know, running cycles. So our busy time is from right now until the end of May, and then we have to make do through the summer until October, and then we pick back up again. Now, provided, you know, hopefully COVID is going to be in the rearview mirror at some point, and so we don't have to go back and keep dealing with this. But that's kind of how our year runs. We would definitely not be able to do it, you know, by the time where fall runs, comes up. My guess is that if we did something so that that summer after, when we're slower, we would have time to put that in. If you guys would be open to that, that would be amazing.
Just curious, thank you.
Yep.
What do you guys want to go from here?
I'd like to see him be able to operate his business and do what we can to support him. I don't think putting a year right now is sufficient because who knows where we're going to be a year from now. So I think we do need to explore it, as much as I hate the idea of another committee, I think that's probably the right idea.
Swagl, further thoughts?
Make a motion that, I suppose, I'd have to make a motion to form a committee, would I or no?
No.
No?
No.
Perfect. Perfect.
And Mr. Mary, are you prepared to?
Yeah, I think I could work with Mr. Gosted and probably Javen as well, just to make sure there's not any unintended consequences of this, but I mean, is there anybody on council that's opposed to this temporarily, until it gets figured out, I guess, be willing to listen?
I think it's a slippery slope, creating special anything for anybody that walks in the door. I'm not telling you or asking you to do anything, I just caution you, you should be careful, because your phone is going to start to ring from people that want you to do other executive orders.
It already rings quite a bit.
Correct, and that's right, exactly. So I, I think, I agree, I'd like to see Mr. Lee able to figure out his business and keep things moving forward. In a perfect world, he'd buy an oven and start making pizzas, in my opinion.
Any other, yes, Ms. Ma?
Do we have a motion? Can I just get a point of clarification on, you're just asking us to form a committee to look at this, and the mayor will do the executive order?
Correct.
I think ultimately, we receive and file unless somebody wants to do something else, and we move on to the next topic. Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lee, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I would mention one other thing related to all of the liquor licenses and what we've been doing specifically related to what Mr. Phelan mentioned. When we agreed to, I guess I wouldn't say we agreed, the mayor, previous mayor consulted lots of us about making changes to liquor and allowing liquor delivery, and as part of that, I was personally tasked with calling some of our retail establishments that sell liquor, to ask them their opinion, and they were all very kind and said that they want the restaurants to survive and do well, and the consistent message that I got back, including from people that are here in the audience tonight, is no problem, we want them to do well, as long as things go back to the way they were when we come through this. And I'm not saying that life changes, right? It does, but we should certainly take that into consideration and have those discussions again, before we, you know, turn into the Wild West, so.
Council President Sandy, if we could include that discussion as part of this, you know, I know there's bars and restaurants that I would like to engage as part of kind of their new economy and new normal, whatever you want to call it, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Okay, item 2.5, light pillars for North Third Street reconstruction. Mr. Richards, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Sandy. The item before you tonight is light pillars for the North Third Street reconstruction project. As you may recall, last fall, council approved contracting with Badman Designs to design, fabricate, and install light pillars to complete the streetscape component of the Demers reconstruction project. Similarly, North Third Street will be built with pillars, but no light pillars to go on top of them. So when that original contract with Mr. Badman was approved last fall, it included the option to add up to eight more pillars, kind of anticipating that the Third Street project possibly likely would come along. Since council did approve contracting with OP Construction for that project last week, we're asking for authorization to exercise that option and get Mr. Badman to, basically, put him under contract for eight more light pillars at the same unit cost that we contracted with for Demers, with the recommendation that the funding come out of our beautification program cash carryover.
Move approval?
Moved by Weber, before any discussion, second by anyone else?
I'll second.
Second by Doppler, great, any comments? Mr. Bean, what's our timeline on having any of these pillars installed?
This summer.
Awesome.
On Demers.
That's perfect. Now, hopefully this, when, maybe next summer for third? Awesome.
Possibly this fall if things go extraordinarily well.
Right, so probably next summer.
Probably.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards, appreciate it. Item 2.6, Grand Forks Corporate Center 1 and 2, ownership transfer from the City of Grand Forks to the Jobs Development Authority. Mr. Phelan, good evening.
Hey, Council President Sandy, members of City Council, I think this is really one thing the City of Grand Forks really did post-flood, if you think of what we did, flood protection, Greenway, thank goodness it looks the way it does, it didn't have to look that way, and with the great Greenway. I think number two, all the south end infrastructure the City of Grand Forks put in, that really set us down the road for twenty years, and then finally the downtown redevelopment, it really centered with this corporate center, and so it's really exciting to be at the moment, twenty-plus years later, that we're reaping some of the benefits of our people that came before us. And so I think really the intent is, right now, the agreement, the current agreement says that it would, without something else happening, it moves from the City of Grand Forks, because it, to the JDA, the debt has been paid off, and the JD, or the EDA, I should say, has said we can move forward with that, they've released us of any encumbrances, that did happen last fall, and what we're doing currently, we're planning to update the current appraisal that has it appraised, both Corporate 1 and 2 at about nine point five million plus, and so we are going to have some meetings with the three tenants in Corporate Center 1, which is Alaris, Brady Martz, and Kemmerer Law Firm, and they have a special condo provision. Corporate Center 2 is simply, we have some renters in that building, one being Brady Martz on the second floor, third floor is the GSA, which is being serviced by Social Security. So those are the two tenants, so they are separate and distinct. There is a power center that's centered on the Corporate Center 2 property, there's a shared skyway with these buildings, and so we're going to first meet with the three tenants on Corporate 1, and we're going to try to do this in the smartest way possible, so that we can sell the building for as much money as possible, and make sure there's some kind of seamlessness with Corporate Center 1 and 2. So we are beginning those conversations, and we are trying to get this wrapped up here in the next six months, and we know there's interest, both in Corporate Center 1 and 2, so that's really an exciting piece, all these years later. And there's been lots of growth fund discussion about what should we do with these proceeds, and I just want to remind everybody about thirty-six plus percent goes to CDVG, and I know Meredith is working with those interests, stakeholders that would be interested in some of this one-time fund, so we are gonna, we have made those folks that are in the nonprofit world aware of those, and then the remaining portion is, can go back to the city for economic development purposes, we intend to do that. So really, I think the Council President Sandy and others, you've been aware of the conversations, really, the thought is to try to take that money and invest it in grow the workforce in really key strategic areas, and so hopefully we're, whomever's here twenty years from now can say, wow, we really created these great economic clusters, some of it was what they did twenty-plus years ago. So with that, we're just simply asking to be transferred. I would anticipate, since it'll go over the JDA assembly, we'll be meeting with you as part of the JDA growth fund, different than City Council, if you kind of really accentuate what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Move approval?
Moved by Weber, second by Cavami, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.7, budget amendment for the Health Department and Care's funding. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the City Council. You have before you a budget amendment that represents additional funding that the City of Grand Forks, Grand Forks Public Health Department will receive from the North Dakota Department of Health. It represents about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This is an amendment to an agreement that we had in place last year for COVID-related expenses. I anticipate that while this may support vaccination efforts, it will more actually support the other activities that will not be fully, freely reimbursable. It does have a timeline on it, but the funding needs to be spent by June 30th of this year. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any comments or questions? Mr. Weigl?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, second by Bean.
President Sandy, if I, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
I'd just take a quick moment to recognize the outstanding job of Grand Forks County Health, Department of Health is doing with the vaccination program. It's really just a rule-of-class operation going on there, nothing but wonderful reports. Congratulations. I know that this has been months in the making, lots of work has gone into this, and it's just been, I'm only hearing fantastic reports about how well it's going.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that. Everyone's saying they're doing a great job, I agree. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Item 2.8, Police Department Soul Source replacement purchase of tasers. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. I stand before you, asking you to approve a soul source purchase document. Basically, what we have is our Taser-controlled, conducted electrical weapons have a five-year lifespan, actually, we've now exceeded that by a year, they're starting to fail. The one thing that we have is Axon Enterprise Incorporated, as stated in your staff report, is a sole manufacturer, distributor, and retailer of tasers. So basically, what we're asking is the approval of a soul source document, the funding will come partially from JDA grant funding, the rest from cash carryover within the existing budget.
Chief, you have to bring this to us because it's soul source?
That is correct, sir.
Because you're under, you have the threshold where you could do it administratively, but you're bringing it because it's soul source?
Correct, it does not follow that. Being a soul source, the city's purchase policy states that if it's going to go soul source, I have to get approval with council.
What do you do with the old tasers?
You know, more than likely, they'll probably be destroyed. There's, there's nothing to them, I mean, once, it's like electronics, once they've reached their useful life cycle, they're, they passed.
Might be a good opportunity for a fundraiser, maybe taze the mayor, something like that?
I'm sure he could ride the lightning, I've been there, but I'm sure not going to volunteer him for that, if you choose to do so, please feel free, but I think you might have seven volunteers that taze me up there, but, you know, we can daisy chain it, so we could make it just a whole group thing, too, if we can put all seven of you in a line, and then you can all tip over, so it could be a bonding experience, I guess.
That's a horrible idea. Any other, any other comments, Mr. Weigl?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, second by Ma. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item 2.9, ordinance relating to amend, amendment to City Code Section 9-0505 relating to labor and lieu of fine. Anyone want to change the ordinance, so we don't have to define who, where people specifically do their labor?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami, second by Weigl. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.10, plans and specs for Project 8231, upgrade lift stations 12 and 13. Mr. Walker, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. This project is intended to renew two of the forty-two stations that the city has that pumps wastewater, in its intent to provide efficient and reliable service for those stations for the next fifteen to twenty years. One station is located on 10th Avenue North, just south of the Memorial Park Cemetery, the other one is on Sixth Avenue North, just south, excuse me, just north of the old med school building. Both these stations were rehabbed probably about twenty years ago, so they're kind of overdue for, for an upgrade. There is also work at Lift Station 46, which is up at the biomass, near the biomass building, that's also intended for a little bit of ventilation work. The engineer's estimate for this project is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, total project is estimated at about nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Staff's recommendation is to approve the plan's specifications.
Mr. Cavami, the line item on the budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand, is that correct?
That is correct.
So is the other funds coming from somewhere else?
So last year, under, with last year's budget, we funded the engineer's contract, so we might be a little bit short, the engineer's estimate being at seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we're probably about twenty-five thousand dollars short, if the bids come in that, that high. If they come in a little bit less, we'll be okay. If we need additional monies, we would obtain monies from other places within the wastewater budget.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, any other comments? Mr. Bean, any thoughts?
I'm ready.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Yes, Ms. Ma.
I was just going to ask, do you put them on a rotation to make sure that they're all getting serviced in kind of a ongoing time, so that we're not left with numerous ones that need to be updated in the same year, so we're kind of continuously working on it?
We do, we, what we do is, is we schedule the rehabs for the ones that are needed the most, and the budget really drives which ones, how many we can do at a time.
I'll make a motion, too.
Moved by Ma, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.11, Project 8352, Columbia Road Sanitary Sewer Force Main relocation for UND Memorial Village Development. Mr. Walker?
So we have a bit of an unusual project, and if you look at the staff recommended action, it's quite lengthy, it includes a number of different items. I'll do my best to explain how this project came about, and why we're asking for the different things that we're asking for under the staff's recommended action. So if you recall, earlier this month, council approved a tax incentive for Memorial Village Development, that's the proposed site at the Memorial Stadium on UND campus. As that project was, continued to be developed, it became obvious that city's force main was in conflict with the building. City's force main runs kind of diagonal through that parcel. The developer asked that we relocate that section of force main, as it was in conflict with his building, and asked that we do it as soon as we possibly can. The developer's intent was to start the demolition work early in April, and knowing that it takes some time for us to develop a project, he asked us to do it as quickly as he could. So to streamline the timeline on this one, we asked WFW to begin work on a project to relocate that section of force main, including the development of plans and specifications, which are now substantially complete. So part of the staff's recommendation tonight would be to, to approve the plans and specifications, as well as the engineering agreement for this project. So city inquired with the developer the possibility of moving the building, so it would avoid the force main. We also asked about the possibility of delaying the construction of the building, such that it would allow us a more opportune time to relocate that section of force main. Both of those possibilities were, would cause significant problems for the development, and were determined to be not an acceptable option. So we continued on with our development of a force main relocation project, as WFW began discussions with suppliers, we found out that there is a, there's a possibility of a shortage of PVC pipe in the near future. The resins that are made, that are used to make PVC pipe are made in Texas, and because of the cold weather problems, a lot of the factories down there shut down, so in addition to the time that it would normally take to acquire the materials, there may be even a more significant delay if we don't obtain them soon, because of the shortage of PVC pipe. For that reason, we are looking at obtaining the materials in advance of the construction project, so for that reason, we will see that we're asking approval for staff to obtain those quotes for that materials, and award those quotes. We're anticipating that, that the materials for this project would be around eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. The force main in question that we're talking about relocating is a force main that was put in in nineteen sixty, so it's some sixty years old. There's a possibility we could relocate a short section around the building, but to us, it makes sense to relocate that full section of force main that exists, that was put in in nineteen sixty, such that when we're done with the project, we'll have a newer force main from the railroad tracks all the way northward of University Avenue. So obviously, when the budget was prepared, we didn't have this project in mind, so it's not included in the current budget, and for that reason, we would be asking for a budget amendment. Our estimate of the project costs is around five hundred thousand dollars. We're also anticipating that this project would be bid on March twenty We're also anticipating that this project would be bid on March 24th, assuming that we receive approval on it tonight. And to further shorten the timeline as to when the contractor can start, we're asking for a special city council meeting on March 29th. So with all of that in mind, our recommended action for tonight would be to approve the task order agreement with WFW for design bidding and construction administrative services in the amount of $89,949. Approve the plans and specifications. Approve any necessary budget amendments from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund 5200 cash balance. Authorize staff to advertise for construction bids. Set specialist city council meeting for March 29th for award of project bids. And authorize staff to pre-purchase project materials for this project.
That's some good stuff. Mr. Weber, you look like you might have something to say.
I'll, I'll move approval. I'm wondering if we could combine that March 29th meeting with some other work that we might have to do.
Great idea. Is there, is there a second? Second by Veen, or comment?
Well, both.
Okay.
I, I, I think in all my years, I've never seen a motion like this. It's pretty much unprecedented in everyone, every one of the steps. And we're probably going a little beyond what we would, not a little, a lot beyond what we would normally do. On the same token, to kind of show us what you can do if you want to, and how we're getting, addressing an issue that needs to be done. I mean, I agree, you could probably do a portion of it. I'm assuming the city will pay for this entirely. But there are citywide benefits to doing it also, so therefore, it makes sense to be able to do it. And I was going to say the same thing as Mr. Weber. We already, I think, Mr. Sandy, you had already called for a meeting on the 29th, right? So we could combine that with a meeting that we're already having. Anyway, we could go from a committee meeting to a council and back, or however we want to do it. So, yeah, I, I support this. I think it's pretty ingenious how everybody put this one together.
Council President Sandy, if I could say, I just want everyone to know, so this would be final, we're asking for final approval tonight. And we're, we are going to fund the entire project, and that would be per city. Force mains are trunk infrastructure, so the city of Grand Forks via the Wastewater Enterprise Fund pay for these, and so that's not unique. And I think the other thing, maybe Mark talked about, it is an older pipe, but it, and it, this, what we're going to replace it with, it will, will have a much better life, too. Maybe, Mark, let them know how it will be replaced. We have had breaks on this line, and when this line breaks, it's a big problem. And because this is like a main artery, and so when this thing breaks, there's, there's a lot of scrambling. So I think this is a good move to replace it.
Wasn't necessarily going to get into the details of, of the pipe, but...
Good. Let's knock that.
Well, just, just a short. So this pipe exists as a pre-stress concrete cylinder pipe. It's a, it's a, it's a metal pipe that's wrapped with a band of steel, and then compressed inside of it is, is concrete, and on the outside is concrete. It's a unique pipe, and it works well. The only thing is, is that concrete is corrosive to hydrogen sulfide gases, which are present, present in sanitary sewage. And the hydrogen sulfide gases will seek their way to, to a high point. So when the original pipe was put in, it was graded to high points, and at every high point, they put an air release valve to expel those gases so that they're, they don't corrode. Where we've been finding corrosion is at these, these high points. So that is the, the weakest part of the, of the pipe. So we are replacing this pipe with PVC pipe, which is non-corrosive, and doesn't have the, the problems that we've seen with pre-stress concrete cylinder pipe.
Engineering, good ideas. Any, do we have a motion and a second? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Item 2.12, Award Bid for Project 8269.1-2021 Flood Fight Prep and Debris Cleanup. Mr. Walker?
So with the latest projections from the National Weather Service, the likelihood of a significant flood for this year is, is rather minimal. Of course, we, we have some more of the season left to go, so things could change. But what you have before you is a project that we, we bid every, every year. It, it is a contract that is put in place so that if we need assistance from a contractor, it's there. And we simply have to just order the contractor to, to come in and, and do work for us. This year, we, we opened bids on that, and we received a single bid from Gowan Construction. It is a similar amount to what we've seen before. It is a little bit more expensive than what we've seen before, but we've seen a lot of things increase with inflation. The work of this contract is, is set up on a time and materials basis. And if we need the work of this contractor, we would direct him what work we would want him to do, and we would pay him for the, the time and, and equipment that he, he used on it. If we do not do any work on it whatsoever, the only obligation we would have to this contractor would be to reimburse him for his bond expense, which would not exceed $3,100. But having this contract in place gives us the ability to quickly react. Actual payment would be based upon the actual hours of, of labor and equipment that he would, he would use, if any. You will also see two other projects similar to this, the next two items. But anyway, regarding this one, it's our recommendation to award the contractor the low bidder Gowan Construction an amount of $398,050.
Move approval? Moved by Weber, or second by Weigle. Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
What, what would stop us from having them do $3,100 worth of work for us? Or having them do $10 worth of work for us so we don't have to reimburse them for their $3,100?
The, the contract is set up such that we will reimburse them for their expense. That is, that is an expense that they pay to their bond because we are requiring them to, to have a, a bond. And there's a cost to that.
No matter what, we're into them for $3,100 plus whatever time and materials?
Correct.
Great. Okay.
It, it is also important that we pay for those contractor expenses such that when we need this contract to be in place, we don't have any bidders.
I got it. Very good. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Docler. Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Item 2.13, Award Bids for Project 8269.2-2021 Flood Fight Sandbag Quotes.
So this is a project that we normally wouldn't bid. We, we've done it a few times in the past, but it isn't one that we would normally bid such as the previous project. Last year, when we needed sandbags, we had our, our flood fighting contractor produce those on a time and equipment basis, so we paid him per hour. This year, we figured we would try to streamline it a little bit better, making it a little bit easier to keep track of, as opposed to keeping track of all the hours that they spent and that type of thing. So we received bids on this last week, and unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids. But it was intended that we would pay for sandbags, not by the hour, but per bag. So if we need sandbags, what we would do is, what we've done last year is just order our, our flood fighting contractor to produce sandbags and pay for them on a, on a time and material basis. So because there's no bids to award, this is an informational item, there's no action necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Item 2.14, Award Bid for Project 8269.3-2021 Flood Fight Crushed Concrete.
Again, this is similar to the previous one. This is something that we hadn't bid before. But if you recall, when we did a presentation of what it would be, what things would be necessary for us to raise the level of the flood protection, one of the things that we were short of is crushed concrete. It would be our intent that we would bid this project every year and have a contract in place should we need crushed concrete to, to raise levies. Crushed concrete would be used in places where we have, where the, where the, we have existing roadways that are acting as city's levees, such as Belmont Road and Merrifield Road. The intent would be is, is that if we need crushed concrete, we could call upon this contractor to provide that material. If we don't need any material, we would, we'd pay nothing. So it would be staff's recommendation that we would award this contractor to low bidder Gowan Construction in the amount of $217,500.
Moved by Veen, second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Council President Sandy, can I recognize Mark Walker? I don't know if this might be Mark Walker's last spring. He hasn't made any announcement. But I think we should recognize all the great work that Mark has done. And we mentioned the flood protection project. That was a lot of Mark Walker, and, and just all these seasonal things that he's done. I think we're going to have an easier season, but all the great work that Mark has done, he may, might be his last time at the podium talking about these things, but he does incredible work behind the scenes that we should all really appreciate. So I wanted to say thank you while he's here this evening.
Mr. Walker should get a standing ovation every time he sits down. Item 2.15, Create District for Project 8311, District 753, Belmont Road Reconstruction from 55th to River's Edge Drive. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Sandy, council members. This is the second phase of a three-phase project to reconstruct the rural two-lane asphalt sections of Belmont Road into a three-lane concrete section. You may recall, last year, we constructed from 62nd Avenue South up to 55th Avenue South. This is that next phase, taking it one section further north up to River's Edge Drive. This will install, as I said, a three-lane concrete roadway with curb and gutter connecting to existing storm sewer, and installing streetlights, bike path, and sidewalk, consistent with the construction this past summer on Phase 1. This project is a city cost share of 80/20, and would be funded from Fund 4815. This project was originally programmed for construction in 2023, but because we received Prairie Dog funding into Fund 4815, we were able to accelerate this by two years, so we're very pleased at that opportunity. The estimated construction cost is roughly $1.8 million, with the city's share being roughly $1.3 million. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the engineer's report, creation of the special assessment district, and directing engineering to prepare plans and specifications and advertise for construction.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Cavami moves approval. It's his award. Is there a second? Second by Mark. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.16, Create District for Project 8327, District 757 Reconstruction, 27th Avenue South from Belmont Road to Chestnut Street. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This portion of 27th Avenue South is a one-block portion immediately west of Belmont Road, intersecting Belmont Road. It consists of roughly 2/3 asphalt, 1/3 concrete. The asphalt is extremely patched and potholed. It's in very, very rough shape. The concrete 1/3 is, was installed in the 1960s and is cracked, and with some shattered panels as well. So we are recommending reconstruction of this section. We looked at some other options like mill and overlay and concrete panel replacement, which although they would be less expensive, we feel they would not be adequate. This pavement is, is far gone in its life cycle. We would like to mention we are able to salvage the curb and gutter, which saves about a third of the cost of the project. Curb and gutter surprisingly is in very good shape. So this, we feel is a very cost-effective, long-term solution for this road.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any comments or... Moved by Cavami, second by Mark. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.17, Award Bid for Project 8288, 2021 Engineering and Inspections Vehicles. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. Each year, the city has an effort to replace a portion of its vehicle fleet as it approaches the end of their service life. In 2020, the engineering department was budgeted to replace one vehicle. That was put on a strategic pause just due to the uncertainty of COVID and the budget impacts. We have since reassessed, and in discussion of finance, we all feel that we're in a better position today than we were nine months ago, or at least what we thought we might be. So we have gone out and requested bids. We received two bids for replacement of a 2010 Ford Escape. And tonight, we're requesting approval to award to the low bidder Rydell for one vehicle.
Any comments or questions?
Move approval.
Mr. Weigle moves approval, second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. There is one other question for that. Again, it's a $20,000 deal. Why, why aren't we just doing that administratively, Todd?
I think the reason being is our original plan was to solicit for bids for two vehicles, engineering and inspections. The bid opening was just a couple duty days ago, last week, and inspections looked at the timeline for delivery. Fleet vehicles are running about four to six months for delivery, and that didn't meet their requirements, so they decided to resolicit. Tonight, we're just recommending award of one vehicle versus the two that we had planned for.
Council President, I think it's true to say we have a $50,000 budget approval, as long as it's in the budget. So we probably theoretically could have done two vehicles, too, so I, I think you're right.
Well, I'm just happy to talk about it. Moving right along. Item 2.18, Award Bids for Project 8280, 2021 Asphalt Street Repairs. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This project previously met council, and plans and specifications were approved. On February 11th, we opened bids. We received a total of five bids. The low bid was submitted by Taggart Contracting in the amount of $107,740. This is 5% below the engineer's estimate. We are recommending award of this contract to the low bidder.
Any questions? Mr. Cavami moves, second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. 2.19, Sidewalk West Number 1 for Project 8278, 2021 City Sidewalks. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. Each year, the engineering department proposes one, maybe two lists of sidewalks that we would like to replace in the upcoming season. Many of these are due to complaints we've received from residents for safety reasons, tripping hazards, et cetera. Some of these are simply missing sidewalks that were not constructed within the ordinance required nine months of issuance of a building permit. And some are city staff observing neighborhoods that really need some work due to tripping hazards and proposing those. So the list before you tonight consists of all three of those different situations, and we're requesting approval of the list so we can start working with the homeowners and getting those repairs done.
Mr. Lieberman, any comments or questions? Moved by Veen, second by Cavami. Yes, sir?
So the property owners won't be notified until after this?
That's correct. We need council approval first, then we submit a letter with the, the city estimate to the homeowner. They always have the option to have it replaced themselves at, at their contractor of choice, or they can use the city contractor.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. You have a second.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.20, Award Bid for Project 8262 Intersection Improvements at South Washington and 36th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you again. This project previously met council for approval of plans and specifications. We have since solicited for bids, and we received four bids. The low bid was submitted by MAC Construction in the amount of $785,958.25. This is 10% lower than the engineer's estimate, so we are recommending council approval award. award.
Great. It's nice to see we're putting right turn lanes in. Any comments or thoughts? Moved by Weigl, second by Mac. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 221, 2021 construction engineering amendment for Project 8262, intersection improvements at South Washington Street and 36th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you again. This amendment is regards to the task order with Houston Engineering. They designed the intersection project at Washington and 36th Avenue, and we typically wait until midwinter to assess our workload for the upcoming summer before recommending an amendment for construction services with a consultant. In this case, we are recommending extending the task order with Houston in the amount of $73,724. This would encompass construction administrative services and inspection for this project this summer.
Any comments or questions from Mr. Lieberman? Mr. Veen? Moved by Veen, second by Cavani. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all your heavy lifting tonight, Mr. Lieberman. Item 222, cost participation and maintenance agreement, CPMA, for Project 8059, reconstruct North Columbia Road from University to the overpass. Mr. Grasser.
Gosh, I should have had Mr. Lieberman cover this one, too.
Or Mr. Walker. He'd have been fine.
Now, we're going to save Mr. Walker. He really wanted to get into the chemical reactions that are going on in that concrete cylinder pipe, so if you really want to get into that, we can do that on a special meeting on March if you want. Sorry. I shouldn't get sarcastic. Item 2.22, this is really a standard paperwork item here with the North Dakota DOT. We're using federal money on this project here on the North Columbia Road reconstruction. Plan is debated on March 12th, scheduled for 2021 construction. And again, this is just standard paperwork. We're looking for motion to approve.
Is there any way we can sneak some of that force main into this?
There actually is a force main component that's going in with this project. It's just that under a DOT project, it would be much more cumbersome in the process that we're at, and it would be later than what we're talking about now for the memorial project, so.
Got it. Timing is everything. Great. Any thoughts, any comments?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, second by Cavani. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 223. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Award bid number 2021-4, Public Works Operations Street Division, front-end loader with attachments. Ms. Amundson.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee and council. The city received three bids on February 11th on the front-end loader with attachments, and I've included some information. We're trading in a 2006 payloader and also a 2000, your 2000 plow truck. And so with that, staff requests to approve bids for the front-end loader with the attachments and also to include the trade-in equipment, to award the bid to Butler Machinery Company in the amount of $268,871, and then to authorize staff to procure capital lease financing, subject to review and approval by the Finance Department and the city attorney.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Weigl? No. Mr. Cavani moves approval. Is there a second? Second by Mac. Thank you, Mr. Weber as well. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 224, lead service line replacement program. Ms. Barbie.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Tonight, I'm before you to ask for approval to accept the funding from the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund for the lead service line replacement program. This would be a new program to the City of Grand Forks. We are able to accept funding from them and be able to reimburse residents that are interested and have lead service lines for 90%. The loan is a forgiveness program, so 10% of that would be the responsibility of the city on projects that we're currently working on, like our water main replacement project. But residents that wanted to replace their lead service line could do that at a 10% cost of that project for themselves to improve their home. We currently are working on a number of items within the lead and copper rule, and as part of that, excuse me, we have to identify the number of lead service lines within our community, and we have to make those available, so publish that. And then we also have to develop a program like this. We have three years to do that, but last year, when we were working on the program, we were working with the City of Bismarck, and they had started this program because the funding was available. So we wanted to take that opportunity. We did apply and receive a letter from the Department of Environmental Quality saying that we are on their list of priority projects, and they wanted us to reconfirm that, to accept that $375,000 to get us started on the program. That would be funding that we would continue to apply for if it was available and that the program was working well in the City of Grand Forks. We've met with finance and engineering, and we'll continue to work out all the final details on the policy itself, but tonight, we're just asking for approval to accept that funding and continue to work through the program details.
Do you know how many properties in town have lead service?
We do not. We had estimated originally about 500. We are working on it. It's kind of a long process, so we will share that when we have it, but we're thinking it might be more, about 700 or 800.
Assistant Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
I'll move approval, but I have some questions as well. I'll wait for a second.
Motion by Weber, second by Veen.
I'll second it. I have some questions, too.
Great. Mr. Weber, after you.
So you're estimating on 700 or 800 homes. Do you have some sense of the date when homes were built, when lead would have been used, or after that, lead would not have been used? Is it a date thing, or is it a construction decision?
Well, honestly, the research that I've done, you know, you can't believe everything you read on the internet, but between the '30s and '50s, they switched from lead to copper. And so there's a timeframe there between 1930 and 1950 where they would have switched to completely using copper. And I believe it was 84, the Clean Water Act wouldn't allow any more use of lead within those service lines, so any time before that, it could have been used. We're not really sure at this point, but that's kind of what we've directed people. But if they haven't actually, if they feel that they might have a lead service line to contact us, and we'll confirm that with them or work with them to determine that, that would just be a simple visit.
Great. So mostly is replaced, the homeowner knows that it was replaced. A home built before the '30s, most likely lead, between '30s and '50s, possibility of lead. That's kind of a guideline?
Yeah, and honestly, you know, there could be that exception out there, too, but if anybody was interested, we could just take a look. And we help determine those during the water main replacement projects as well.
And then the replacement, does that mean tearing up the front yard for the line from the street, or is this done underground? What does that job look like?
Yeah, if you've ever seen a water main replacement project, it's quite messy. So it's from the water main itself all the way up to the curb stop, and then you actually, in order to make it effective, you have to replace the line from the curb stop, the part in the ground in your berm, all the way into the meter. So it is kind of messy, but the funding can be used to do the restoration and landscaping, replace the sidewalk, et cetera, in front of the home, so it doesn't have to be that expensive to the homeowner. That's something that we would work with them on.
Great. And the 10% that would be left for the property owner, would that be added to their water bill over 10 years? Is it assessed, or is it a one-time payment? What kind of program were you thinking of?
Right now, we were looking at currently just having it a one-time payment. The contract would be actually between the homeowner and the contractor. The city would pay the 90% part of that bill, but then the homeowner would work directly with the contractor, just so we don't have to chase 10% of the cost. We've talked about a maximum, about how much we would actually have the resident themselves have to pay in that 10%. So we were looking at that, too, that the funding could be realized in that effort so that they're not, it's not too much of a bill. But they would have estimates prior to us approving the application so that they would know what their costs would be. Most service line replacements are about $2,500 without, you know, any complications, so that would be, you know, about $250 is what we're asking the resident to pay. It would increase the value of their home and, of course, you know, reduce the risk of any sort of lead.
Sure. Fantastic. Is it a possibility that this could be available for some homeowners this summer already?
That's what we're working towards, yes. With the approval of this tonight, well, I'm sorry, if there's an approval of this next week, we will confirm that with DEQ and then continue to work on the policy within the city and start this summer.
Wonderful. Thanks so much.
That's great. Mr. Veen? Yes, sir.
One question. Does some of this lead service continue past the curb stop and some into the home themselves?
Yes.
So we will place the service, but that doesn't mean the house itself is lead-free?
Correct.
And so the idea would be that eventually, we would hope that their plumbing would be entirely replaced. This is going to solve a part of the problem, but there's still more, at least in some of these homes.
Absolutely. There could be, yep. But we would be willing to work with them to help educate what they can do, you know, how they can get their water tested, et cetera.
Now, most of that lead pipe is corroded on the inside, so there's not really water that's getting in contact with the lead typically unless it's disturbed. Is that right?
Absolutely, yes. We do have, part of our treatment process does allow the pipe to become, I'm trying to, there's a component that allows us to protect that lead pipe from actually leaching into the water, and that truly is the case with a lot of the sampling that we do, although, you know, there is the concern, if I do have a lead service pipe and I haven't had my water tested, you know, do I have lead, a component of lead within a small part of my drinking water, and how do I rectify that?
Mr. Phelan?
I could just say, you know, people worry about Flint, Michigan, and that was what happened. It was in their distribution system. They switched to a different, I think to a river system, and it changed the chemistry in their water, which then corroded all of that on their lead lines. So just so you know, we're well aware of that, and if we want to maintain that lining on those pipes, and so we'll be very cognizant of that. Even when we switched to the new treatment plant, we're very aware of that. But just so everyone knows, it came from the distribution system where they weren't aware of what switching to a lower-cost water supply was going to do to people with lead lines.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Phelan. So we actually did do sampling last fall, and we had 60 homes within our current sampling plan that's lead and copper. We'll do that again this spring, and then depending upon the results, if they're just like last fall, then we'll probably be moved to every three years that we're required to continue to do that. But then we could do some intermittent sampling just with this lead replacement program, too.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Barbie, for going out and looking at this new program. It's great. I actually know somebody that's going to benefit from this, so. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Last but not least, 225, memorandum of agreement for covering metropolitan planning within the East Grand Forks, Grand Forks metropolitan area. Mr. Bergman.
President Sandy, members of the committee, this is an agreement that was set up with the ND DOT and the Minnesota DOT, with the NPO and the Transit Properties to have an agreement to continue working and doing a cooperative, comprehensive planning for our transit plan. This has nothing to do with FWHA or anything else, or what Al might be getting into later on. So this would be just for the transit side of it there.
Any comments from Mr. Bergman? Everybody's beaten?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, second by Cavani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under item three, informational items, there's a COVID update. The dashboard's available. Any comments or questions for Ms. Swanson? Hearing none. Very good. Thanks for hanging on for us tonight, Ms. Swanson. Under item four, adjournment. Mr. Phelan, something to add?
We made a lot of positive comments about public health, but just because we're nearing the end of this current tier, so we're going to get to childcare and then K through 12 education, which is a big deal, and so we're trying to do that within the next two weeks here, and we know high school is starting all in on March 8th, so we're really focused on those two groups, just so you'll hear more about getting to childcare workers and teachers and associated staff, so that's an exciting step for us. I also want to give a huge shout out. Sometimes we get a lot of credit for the city, for these community-wide vaccination clinics, but our other huge partners, Altrue, and they've lent us their epic IT systems, and they've lent us their doses for the vaccine, so we owe them, and they've also helped support all these. So we get a lot of the kudos, but they're a great partner, and they were willing to help let us lead and then be in that supporting role. So I want, if they hear it tonight, they're a huge part of our success, too. Mr. Sandy.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I agree. Ms. Swanson, something to add? Okay, thank you again. Thank you so much for everything you're doing for us. Any other comments?
Move adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Weigl, second by Mac. Anyone disagree? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned.